This hearing is now in session. My name is Melody Walker. I am the Pest Survey and Control Section Manager for the Division of Agricultural Resource Management at the Department of Agriculture, Trade, and Consumer Protection. I will be conducting today's public hearing. This is a hearing on an emergency rule related to hemp and affecting small businesses. Specifically, this rule repeals and replaces emergency rule EMR 2039, which was published and effective on October 29, 2020. The repeal and replacement was necessary as the United States Department of Agriculture published CFR 990 final rule on January 19, 2021, with an effective date of March 22, 2021, which offers more flexibilities for the hemp program. This new rule will operate under the authority of the 2014 Farm Bill for the 2021 growing season by taking advantage of the program extensions offered in Sections 122 of the Continuing Appropriations Act and Section 782 of the Consolidated Appropriations Act. We are holding this hearing via Zoom. I have initiated this hearing from Madison, Wisconsin. Today is Friday, June 4, 2021, and the time is 1:00 p.m. This is the only scheduled hearing on this emergency rule. This rule was published in the Wisconsin State Journal on May 3. Copies of the rule have been available online since Monday, June 29, on the state's... May 29, on the state's legislators' website and in Administrative Register 774B, published by the Legislative Reference Bureau, as well as the Department of Agriculture, Trade, and Consumer Protection website. This hearing will give you a chance to express your opinions on this rule. Your opinions will also be considered as the department moves forward with writing the state plan and next hemp emergency rule, which is required for the state to have lead-up regulatory authority under the United States Department of Agriculture final rule for a domestic hemp production program. To summarize the timeline, the hemp research program will sunset on December 31, 2021. The department is interested in what you have to say. You may provide facts, evidence, and arguments to support your opinions. The department will consider your views and those of interested parties. You may give oral testimony today if you wish to do so. Based on the number of requests, we reserve the right to limit testimony time if it becomes necessary to allow others to present testimony. In addition, you may also submit written comments for the hearing record, regardless of whether you testify today, but you must submit your written comments no later than midnight on Friday, June 11. The department is recording this hearing. We will include in the official hearing record all testimony received today. Written comments should be directed to Abbey Graph Hemp Program, Department of Agriculture, Trade, and Consumer Protection, 2811 Agriculture Drive, PO Box 8911, Madison, Wisconsin, 7308-8911, or by email to abbey-graph@wisconsin.gov. Next steps, before we take testimony, I will present factual information to help you understand the content of this emergency rule. The department will consider today's testimony and all written comments we receive between May 25, 2021, when the hearing record opened, and midnight on June 11, when the hearing record for this emergency rule officially closes. The department will consider all comments received through this hearing process. We develop additional rules to further align the Wisconsin hemp program with 2019 Wisconsin Act 68 and the USDA interim final rule. The emergency rule took effect on May 3, 2021, and remains in effect until the expiration of the hemp program or the date on which the emergency rules implementing the USDA-approved state plan take effect, whichever is sooner. If you would like to provide oral testimony today and have not already done so, I ask that you complete the virtual appearance card by clicking on the link in the Zoom chat box, and we will collect those names. If you are on Zoom by phone and would like to provide oral testimony, we will take a few minutes to collect those names periodically throughout the hearing and get you in the queue to speak. Abbey will call on individuals by name to provide their testimony. Before you give your testimony, please state your name, and if you would like, who you represent, and whether you are for or against the rule, or whether you are testifying for information. Based on the number of individuals we anticipate wanting to testify, we may need to limit testimony to about three minutes to ensure everyone has the opportunity to testify. As a reminder, you may submit written comments to Abbey Graph at the department until midnight on June 11. Also, we plan to post the audio recording of this hearing on the Wisconsin Department of Agriculture, Trade, and Consumer Protection website a day or two after the hearing. For those who can't participate in the hearing today, if you wish to provide oral testimony today, while I am reading the rule summary, you may open the link in the chat box and complete the virtual appearance card if you have not already done so. We will collect the names of those on the Zoom by telephone that would like to provide testimony after I read the rule summary. At this time, I will read the rule summary. This emergency rule updates the existing hemp research program or hemp program to allow the people of this state the greatest possible opportunity to engage in hemp production. This rule repeals and replaces emergency rule 2039. This was necessary as the United States Department of Agriculture published the final rule on January 19, 2021, with an effective date of March 22, 2021, which offers more flexibilities for the hemp program. This new rule will operate under the authority of the 2014 Farm Bill for the 2021 growing season by taking advantage of the program extensions offered in Section 122 of the Continuing Appropriations Act and Section 782 of the Consolidated Appropriations Act. These acts extended the 2014 Farm Bill until September 30, 2021, and then through December 31, 2021, respectively. Operating under a 2014 Farm Bill research program while incorporating certain flexibilities offered in the federal final rule provides Wisconsin hemp growers the greatest opportunity to produce hemp. This rule maintains the existing hemp program, incorporates certain provisions of the final rule into the program, and provides more detail to reflect current program practices. The updated provisions and new language in the rule do not make substantial changes to the implementation of the program for the 2021 growing season, and the regulated industry will not experience significant change in program implementation from how the program has operated since inception. This emergency rule gives licensed growers the options to remediate, re-sample, and retest noncompliant hemp. As defined in the rule, remediation is the process of a licensed grower rendering part of the cannabis crop unusable by destroying the flower material. A large portion of the Delta 9 THC found in cannabis plants is stored within the plant's floral material. By allowing growers to destroy this part of the cannabis plant, they are more likely to have a compliant crop. A second permitted form of remediation is for the grower to shred or grind the entire lot into a homogeneous biomass. Growers may only remediate after their hemp has been tested and is found to be noncompliant by the department. Remediated hemp must be sampled and pass regulatory testing. The option of remediation is a new addition to the hemp program and was incorporated to give growers a greater chance of having a compliant and marketable crop. In addition, this rule includes clarifying language on negligent enforcement violations for licensed participants. This rule outlines when a grower or processor would have a license denied, suspended, or revoked. For example, a licensee may be denied a license if they apply while their current license is suspended, apply in place of another licensee, violate this rule or Wisconsin statute 94.55, or does not follow a written order from the department. This rule also provides more detail on corrective action plans for when a licensee negligently violates this rule. These changes are reflective of current program procedures. This emergency rule will have a continued fiscal impact on the department's operations. Department staff must review each application and all supporting information and perform background checks on each applicant. This regulatory program requires a high degree of customer support and education. Department staff will also be responsible for inspections, sampling, laboratory analysis, and compliance. This rule creates a new $300 fee for the option to sample and test remediated noncompliant hemp lots or re-sample and test remediated noncompliant hemp lots. This rule also creates a new $200 fee for the option to retest where a re-sample is not required. Remediating and retesting are voluntary under this rule, and therefore growers are not required to pay these fees unless they choose to remediate or retest. The complete fiscal estimate is available on the legislative website. This rule continues the regulatory framework of the hemp program as it existed under the previous emergency rules with minor changes to ensure consistency with state law and to clarify rule language to reflect program practice. The rule provides an option for licensed growers to remediate their hemp if it exceeds the regulatory level of 0.3% total Delta 9 THC. This should benefit small businesses as it provides an alternative to destroying the crop. Therefore, the rule will not negatively impact small business as this rule does not make significant modifications to the regulation of the hemp industry. A complete business impact analysis is available on the legislative website. Following today's public hearing, the department will consider all comments received today and throughout in the public comment period, which began on May 25 and ends at midnight on June 11. This concludes the rule summary.
Okay, thank you for that, Melody. And our first person to give testimony is going to be Susan H. So Susan, if you could unmute yourself and give testimony now?
Oh, thank you. This is Susan. I am just listening in today for information purposes, so I just filled out the card to make sure that if there was other things that I needed to ask as we move along, I would be able to do that. So thank you at this point.
Okay, sure. Thank you. And then the next person will be Jacob J.
I'm sorry, did you want me to unmute now?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah.
Oh, super. Awesome. So my name's Jacob. I'm a registered nurse, and I'm a hobby farmer. I grew hemp for the first time last year, and I'm doing research in conjunction with the University of Illinois, testing different varieties for them. And then, so since last year was my first year, it just felt like there were a lot of rules. So I was test... I just got my land, so I was testing different parts to grow. And then when the people came out here to test it, they were like, whoa, these are, are these like separate fields? And it really was just like, everything was within an acre. But they made me get every pla... If there was a gap in hemp, they made, even though it was the same variety, they made me pay for a whole new field to get tested. And so then I still owe them money from last year because each test was $250. And so then I still haven't been issued a permit for this year because I straight up can't afford it because they want, like, and I've already paid them like thousands of dollars, and they have all these silly, nitty-gritty rules which are making, you know... And I mean, that's why I really appreciate these new rules to try to keep hemp from going to waste. Um, but then, yeah, I wa... I just want to advocate for anything we can do to make this more accessible to people like myself who just like, it's not a full-grown operation. Like, I have a big vegetable garden, and I would just like to grow hemp in conjunction with that. But the, you know, the thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars just in permits and testing is pretty ridiculous.
Okay. Um, yeah, thank you for that testimony. And then that is the end of the list of people who filled out the appearance card. So if anyone else would like to give testimony, if you could just indicate that in the chat, and I will unmute you, and yeah, we'll get some more testimonies.
Hey, folks. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Hey, I don't know if I've been acknowledged or not, but would this be a good time to speak? This is F.L. Morris from South Central Wisconsin Hemp Cooperative, and I have a question or comment.
Sure. Yep, you can go now.
Okay, thanks. So I actually, I jumped on today to get further clarification about the changes ahead. And, you know, overall, it looks like this is a pretty big improvement from where we started the last couple years, so I appreciate that. My question is about remediation specifically. Now, I do feel like from your introduction, I got more information about what remediation would look like in the event of a hot crop test for a producer. It sounds like a retest could be executed for a fee after the biomass or the hemp was harvested and mixed flowers with leaves and other less potent parts of the plant to try to capture a passing test. And, you know, that's, that's what I understand now. That's great. But my question goes further. Is biomass, a test pot, able to be harvested and taken to an extraction facility to then have all of the THC removed and retested? Or must the remediation happen only on the farm and primarily through basically blending all parts of the plant instead of the original testing process of just taking the most potent part of the plant, therefore creating more hot crop tests? And I don't know if this is an opportunity to get a question answered, but that would just be one thing that I would want to see clarified going forward from the producer's standpoint.
Hi, F.L. Morris. This is Melody. I can, I can answer your question. And so, um, first of all, and you may already understand this part, that remediation can only occur once a test has failed. But then it would need to be remediated on the farm. And, um, a homogeneous mix made of the parts that would be, like, ground up or chopped up, and it would need to be sampled and tested before it could leave the farm. So, um, it doesn't have to... I would mention maybe too that, like, the woody stalks would not have to be part of that, just so you're clear on that. So, um, but everything that is mixed together would have to be done on the farm before it went to a processor.
Okay, thanks. Maybe just one follow-up question too. My understanding of previous year's regulations was that we weren't to harvest the crop and then have it tested. Has that changed going forward? So, for example, if there's a delay in getting a state sampler out to our farms, but we've gotten a private test that our crop is reaching the threshold of compliance, can we go ahead and harvest and even potentially remove plant material from stems and then present the harvested dried biomass for the initial sampling? Or do we need to have... Or is the sampling procedure going to look the same as previous years where the sampler comes out and takes the top two inches of multiple plants as it stands in the field? If, if that question makes sense, that would be great to have that answered to if possible.
Sure. So first of all, it would be, the, the procedure would be the same as last year. However, um, we're no longer doing a two-inch sample. We're doing a five-inch sample. And that is because that, that material is more likely to be compliant than the top two inches. And so the five-inch sample will incorporate more leaf material and will be probably more likely to, to be compliant with the law. But it does still have to be a pre-harvest sample.
Okay, thanks for those clarifications. I appreciate it.
You bet.
Okay, thank you for that testimony. And up next, we have Haley L.
Hi, everyone. Um, so I, I believe, I mean, well, I guess I'm against the ruling. Um, I would like to see more differentiation in the rules between a CBD crop and an industrial crop that's grown for grain and fiber. Um, these grain and fiber crops have much, much lower THC and CBD percentages than our CBD crops. Um, and the way the industry is going is like, these are the types of crops that can be grown on a large scale, you know, like a 40-acre parcel of hemp grown for fiber and seed. Um, and they're, they're smaller margins compared to the CBD industry when growing this crop. So, um, for the farmers to be paying for the testing for like a large-scale growing operation, like, the, the numbers just don't match up. So I'd like to see maybe something where like certain strains or certain genetics could be given different rules for testing. Yeah, I guess that's my comment.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Um, so that is the last of the people who filled out the appearance card. So if anyone else would like to give testimony, you can just unmute yourself and, um, yeah, give us the testimony. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Misty Paineault, and I'm with Black River Hemp Company. And I'm just wondering, I have some questions about the clarification for remediation. So if I'm understanding this correctly, you're, the remediation involves mixing your hot crop with a compliant crop to make it compliant by diluting it, so to say, and in a dried flower state?
Hi, this is Melody. So remediation is taking the crop that has been tested and mixing parts of the plants, all parts of the plants that, that are usable together into a homogeneous mixture. So it's the entire, it would be the entire crop being chopped or ground to make a homogeneous mixture, but it would not be the combining of two crops.
Okay, so you're talking about from the same lot?
Yes.
The same testing lot, the same variety. Okay, and only in this dried biomass form, so to say? So not after, say, because what we do is we make solventless rosin. So we're not necessarily using the entire plant, and we don't dump chemicals on it and then try to extract it at a later time. What we do is we basically freeze the flowers and we sift the trichomes and separate it from the plant making, and then just using heat and pressure to extract the CBD. And then it's rediluted. So I guess I'm just wondering when, you know, when we extract and we're processing, we kind of have a concentrated product at that point, and then it's rediluted. But we're not talking about any of the processing or extracting. We're only talking about the dry flower samples?
Yeah, we're only talking about, about the lot itself. And I guess I would just sort of clarify. So, you know, previously, we've had, we've had the opportunity to come out and re-sample the lot. And now there are more options. So remediation is one of the options, but it is, um, like grinding up or chopping up that lot, that entire lot, to be re-sam... to be sampled. Or we could, you know, the grower has, can say, "I would like you to re-sample the existing lot," as we have done previously. Or the grower may say, "I would like to have my sample that has been collected and taken to lab retested." And so that is another, so now there are just more options for what a grower may choose to do if the original lot tests hot.
Okay. Okay. No, I, I understand better now. Okay, yeah, so that... And so I li... I also heard that you guys are taking the top five inches instead of the top two because that might give a fuller representation of the plant since the concentration is at the top of the plant. Then why don't you take samples from various places off the plant? Like, a little from the bottom or a little off on the side, and then a little off the top?
Yeah, so we're, we are following along with the federal rule. Yeah, so we're, we are following along with the federal rules and they have given us some options to consider in federal law. Per state law, we're only allowed to you know, kind of be more compliant with what the federal law has offered. So this is, this would be what we would be doing. It provides for the greatest consistency in sampling. So when samplers are trained, they're trained to do exactly the same thing. So there's consistency across all lots for all growers.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hi, this is Iowa. I just have a quick question. So the two strands that we grow now currently have passed so far since the inception of the program. But if, so based on what you're telling us now, we have seed that we know didn't pass and we still have them, the seed. Then you're saying, could I grow that knowing that it didn't pass and then have you test it and then we have it remediated based on how you all intended to break it down?
Could you say that one more time so I make sure I understand?
Okay, so currently we know there were seeds that we had when we first started the program that did not pass. Okay, they, they tested hot. So with this new program that you have, if we still have seed that we, because we had so much of it that we didn't get rid of, if we know it's going to test hot from the beginning, can we let you test it just to verify that to be true? Because of the strand that previously tested hot originally? And we grow it again this, grow it this year? Can, all right, you test it, it goes hot, then can we have it remediated at that point? Since we kind of know, prepare for the remediation on it, if that's making sense?
Okay, so first of all, I, I, we don't, we don't test seeds, so we couldn't do anything with the seed. But if you were to grow this crop and the crop tests hot, then you have options. And
Okay.
Yep. One option would be to remediate the lot and have it tested, have it sampled and tested. Or it could be re sampled as we have done in the past, which was our only option, was to re sample the existing lot. You could have the sample that the lab had originally tested, it could be retested. So these are options from an initial failed test.
Correct, yeah.
Things that could be done.
Okay. All right. So yeah, so then the answer to the question is yes, I could grow it and have it test. Okay, gotcha. All right. Thank you. Okay, from, okay, gotcha. Thank you.
So if there's anyone else who'd like to give testimony, you can just unmute yourself and do that now. So Melody, we've got another question from Misty P in the chat box that says, how long can we expect to wait for hemp variety approval? And can we plant before we get an official approval?
I don't know the answer to the first question. And I would guess, have you submitted a variety to be approved and it's not been approved yet? I'm not entirely sure. I, I know people are working very hard on this to get all the varieties approved as quickly as possible. And if there are any problems with that, we would like to know about that. So, but it should be approved before it is planted.
So we have another question in the chat that says, when that CAP representatives come and sample a lot, how are the samples dried? And is the leaf, stem and flower all combined for that task or just the leaf and flower?
The top five inches going forward, the top five inches of, of the plant are being sampled and everything is combined for the test. I can't give you specifics on the drying. I don't, I would not be correct. So I cannot give you the specifics on that. But I could at a later time.
So yeah, just a reminder, if anyone still wants to give testimony, you can do that now. You can unmute yourself or put the question in the chat if you're more comfortable with that.
I have a question. What do this whole meeting involve?
This is a hemp hearing. And so when we publish a new rule, we hold a hearing to get feedback from people who may be interested in the rule, who may be impacted in the rule. And if, you know, they would like to see further changes in, in new rules, this is an emergency rule, which means that at some point we would publish a final rule. And so any feedback that folks give to us is information for us to consider when we might reach a point where we would publish a final rule. So it's a really important opportunity for people to participate in the rule process. And for specifically, really for people who are impacted by the rule to let us know how they feel and what changes they would like to see. And so it's just, it's an important opportunity for people to participate in, in this process.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have another question in the chat box. If I recall, farms can only fail a test once. Another failed test and the farm would lose their license, correct? It would be nice to see a difference in rules for an indoor grow versus an outdoor grow. Indoor farms have many harvests a year versus an outdoor farm typically having one. It would be nice if indoor farmers could have more than one failed crop within a year. I've seen approved CBD crops test much higher indoors. Thoughts?
Okay, so that is, is not correct. So if a crop fails the test, if a lot fails the test, then first of all, the grower has options and that the options, you know, of course, one option would be to destroy the lot, but then the other options are to have that lot retested, re sampled and retested, to have that lot remediated and, and then have the remediation sampled and tested. Or to have the lot have the sample that was already taken to the lab retested. And so just as one example, so if the lot was tested hot and then it was remediated and re sampled and retested and now that test is at or below 0.3% THC, that is a legal crop or a legal sample. That crop is now legal and, and can be moved. And that the, the initial failed test has no impact on a grower. If, you know, what would cause a grower to have problems with failed tests would be if the crop tested hot and there was some negligence on the part of the grower and that, with that hot crop. Then the department would be working with that grower to you know, to fix whatever situations had caused the negligence. So I think there's, there's a lot of steps and a lot of processes. And it, it would take more than that for a grower to not be able to grow hemp. And it, it would take more than that for a grower to not be able to grow hemp. And if, I know I have a team helping to answer questions here in the chat. And I would just, I believe you need to have at least three negligent violations in five years. And please correct me, my team in the chat if I am wrong on that. And you can only have one negligent violation in a year. So like if you had multiple failed lots, that would still be one negligent violation. So there's, there's more opportunities for not having a problem. And so, yeah, I would leave it out there.
Okay, so I'm gonna read another comment from the chat. And that is, $300 equals 41 plus hours of minimum wage earnings before taxes. "I've spent over $1,000 on permits and testing my hobby farm, my hobby farm hemp, sorry. These fees are another barrier to underrepresented populations in agriculture. No one should need access to hundreds of dollars in permits to grow hemp in their garden. I advocate for removing the extra fee this rule proposes to make hemp growing more accessible to everyone." And again, if anyone else would like to give testimony, feel free to unmute yourself or write it in the chat. Okay, we have another question from Misty P. "What are the rules or protections in place or talks of future hemp rules for processors who are extracting concentrates before they're rediluted to be compliant at 0.3%?"
We have no rules related to that at this time. I can't comment on future rules because I don't know what they would be until, till they're in rule format. If you have some thoughts about what you would like to see in terms of rules related to that, we would like to hear about that.
Okay, so if no one has any more testimony to share, then we are going to end the meeting. So I'll give everyone a minute or two to unmute and give testimony if you still would like to. Okay, so at this time, I'm gonna call this meeting to a close and end recording. Before I do so, I would like to remind everyone that if you're interested in submitting written testimony, please do so by 11:59 PM on Friday, June 11th, at abbey dot graph at wisconsin dot gov, by phone at 608-640-7006, or by writing to DacCap at the address shown on the screen at the bottom here. And then DacCap, thanks everyone who attended today's meeting. And this meeting is officially closed and the recording has ended.